Call the meeting to order of the October 16, 2014, meeting of the Ames Public Library Board of Trustees. We will start with a consent agenda, public forum, financial reports, activity reports, policy review, building project update, and end with new business. We have a consent agenda that includes donations, minutes of our regular meeting from August 21, 2014, minutes from the special meeting of September 3, 2014, claims report from August 2014, and claims report from September 2014. Would anybody like to remove one of those items for separate discussion? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote on approval of the consent agenda. A motion? Oh. We need a motion to approve. Okay. It's been a long time since I've done this.
I moved Kevin.
Thanks, Sherri. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Harry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Al, on the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yay.
Sherri Bradley?
Yay.
Harry?
Yay.
Shazia?
Yes.
Kevin? Yes. Consent agenda passes. Public forum, we have nobody from the public attending this evening. We will move to the financial reports, which begin on page 18. And we will start with the fiscal year 2013, 14-year-end reports. A couple of the items that I noticed were on page 18. We had a decrease in library general funds revenue from FY '13 to FY '14 of a little over $7,000. And on page 22, we ended up at 95.7% of budget, which is excellent, given the unknowns with the temporary space. And I have some further questions for staff between these and the first quarter, but does anybody have any questions on the year-end financials? Are we waiting for the scouts?
Can you have some boy scouts assist us?
Oh, okay.
And they can have a seat with their students.
Nope, that's fine. Come on in. Come on.
I have one person who has support over there.
Come on in.
Come on in and have a seat around the perimeter.
Welcome, guys.
Thank you. This wonderful person, adult, she's coming.
Sherri, we're being joined by some boy scouts who are here. Are you working on badge?
Yes, yes, I am.
Wonderful. Well, this is the Library Board of Trustees, and this is our monthly meeting. And we conduct the business of the library, so we're glad to have you this evening.
Thank you.
Yes. Sherri, any questions on the financials that wrap up FY '14? Anybody else?
No, I'm at this time, Kevin.
Okay. FY first quarter '15 financials are included on pages 30 through 37. We are currently at 23.9% of the budget for the year, based on the first quarter, so really right at the 25%. Then the questions I have are related to page 27. And if I'm understanding this correctly, it's the library renovation project budget. And we look at the available balance at the bottom, and it says $931,883. And then if I go to the first quarter corresponding budget on page 38, the available balance bumped up to $1.5 million.
I'd like to look at Karen.
Okay. Okay. Page 27, the available balance at the end of June 30th of the renovation project was $931. But then when I look at the end of September budget, it bumped up $594,000. And I didn't go li-- it's good, but it doesn't seem correct.
It's not. When you look at the left-hand side, they match.
Right. So the $134,000 in the first column matches, the 611 to 614 matches, I understand that.
So we will look into this. One has to be probably more updated than the other.
Well, you would think the September one would be more up to date, that more money had been expended.
Yeah. It's not that a whole bunch of money has come in. Well, but it's vast.
Unless you had held a certain amount of money, and what the actual bill came in was less. But a half a million dollars of unencumbered.
And we didn't.
Okay.
So we'll have to look into it and see.
Okay.
I know that Karen has worked really hard to, yeah, to get to work with the city staff to get the reports the way we need them, so we will look into it.
Okay. And when I looked ahead to the integrity construction documents, which we'll get to later, they more align with the $934,000.
I would go with the lower amount.
Okay.
If you're going.
Did anybody else have any questions on anything else on the September 30th reports?
Oh.
Okay. So we will leave it to staff to bring back corrections or whatever next month? Perfect. Thank you. Any approvals needed for financials? Karen, do we need to approve the amended? Okay. So the board has received the financials and discussed them. We will move on to activity reports. And the first report is by the Friends Foundation. Jane is unable to join us tonight because of a pending grandchild, if it hasn't arrived already. And I missed the last meeting. I have notes from two meetings ago, but maybe Martha, since you're here, or Jane wants to, or Lynn, want to give an update?
Sure. First, the major update is to introduce Martha Lincoln, who is our new development director. And we are thrilled to have her. She's already been very active in just, is it been a month and a half?
Two months.
Two months. She's really fit right in and done a wonderful job, and we don't know what we did without her. So this is Martha, and you can say a few words if you would like.
Well, it has been two months, and I have been working mostly with the building campaign. And so I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the members of the Board of Trustees for their donations to the building project. We had 100% participation from the Board of Trustees, as well as the Friends Family Foundation, which I think is a credit to the community and to both boards. And so my goal has been to finish up with the pledged donors for the building project, some donor events, some tours of the building. And I'm also starting to work on the end-of-the-year appeal. So you'll be hearing from me again soon.
Thanks, Martha. We had an exciting thing happen today. The donor wall was installed, and so we're ready for a donor event a week from tomorrow, and then it will be unveiled for the public.
Is it covered?
It's covered.
Okay.
But it looks beautiful.
I came running in, I didn't get a chance to look.
So we had a meeting and basically talked about upcoming book sales. There's one that starts tomorrow. And it is the last book sale that's at 809 East Lincoln Way. Then we will move everything back here. The collection of donations for the book sale has already moved back to this location. On November 8th through 11th, there will be a special Veterans Day book sale here. And December 6th and 7th, the holiday book sale here.
The books, and is tomorrow?
It starts tomorrow.
This weekend.
And--
Lynn, when the sale moves to the renewed library, where will it take place? Do you have those located?
In the auditorium.
The auditorium, okay.
Yep. So the spring book sale will be the first large one that's there. Literary Grounds is just hopping. Very, very good sales figures coming back. September alone, which was only two weeks, we brought in $1,574. A good, good month was about $500. So that's in two weeks. We don't expect it to stay at that high, high level all the time, but the volunteers and the Friends Foundation Sales Committee have just done a terrific job of keeping it stocked with interesting items. We're seeing many more donations. We're having more people want to volunteer, so we're staffing it more often. It's really been a great success. Amy Junkie, the president of the Friends Foundation Board, shared an initiative with the rest of the board that she would like to work on in the coming months that will dovetail very nicely with our own board's strategic planning initiatives. So she has asked the Friends Foundation Board members to focus on funding needs and expectations so that the Friends Foundation can respond to the needs that are identified in the strategic plan. So I'm looking forward to having the two boards work together on that over the next few months. We had the usual reports. Really, that pretty much sums up anything that's out of the ordinary that happened at the Friends Foundation.
Perfect. Any questions? Thank you. And staff report.
Okay. Couple of things coming up. I sent you all an email, but it bears mentioning again that Roger Kleisner, the former president of the Friends Foundation Board, was nominated by us and has received an award, or will be receiving an award, at the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy Day on November 13th. And if you would like to attend, we'll have a table, or maybe two. We would love to cheer him on and honor Roger for all of the things that he's done for the library and other things in the community as well. I mentioned the donor wall reception is October 24th at 5:45. We would love to have board members there to serve as hosts and to help honor all of the donor wall people who will be at the reception. ILA, the Iowa Library Association, Annual Conference is next week. If you are interested in going, I had handed out a schedule for that at the August meeting. So if you're interested in going, we can still get you in. I will be attending, as will, I believe, Jerry Hyde, if she's able, from our library. We got exciting news about the new bookmobile. It will be delivered just after Thanksgiving.
Good.
Wow.
Yes. So we're really pleased about that. And we're very, very excited about the exterior graphics. The preliminary sketches are just amazing. It's going to be just incredible.
And it will fit in the garage.
It will fit in the garage.
And all the decorations are on the outside of that?
Yes. It's all designed and contract signed and ready to be produced. I think that's about all that. They're finishing up interior touches, and then the graphic wrap is left to be done.
And the company that's building it will put the wrap on?
Yes. They will contract out. But that's, our artist has been working directly with the company that will be applying the wrap, so that's exciting. We did get some very good press surrounding the opening. And then we were also mentioned in Money Magazine, the October issue, when Ames was named one of the--
Number eight.
Number eight in-- Yeah, I know, I'm like, what is the list, though?
Yeah.
Fifty Best Places to Live in America, and Ames was named number eight. And as part of the justification that the magazine provided was that now the city is making some new off-campus improvements, including a major expansion of the public library and a $55 million slate of renovations for its elementary schools. So that was pretty exciting to be named there. We're having lots of tours come through. We've been visited by other libraries, including, you may remember Gina Millsap, who was the director here some time ago. She brought her staff from Topeka, and it's just been really fun to show off the library. We also are co-sponsoring several events on Saturday, October 25th, featuring Kim and Reggie Harris in concert. It's a co-sponsor with the Children's Theater and City of Ames Parks and Recreation. And we've been asked if our board would consider, our board members would consider serving as hosts and ushers that evening. So if you're interested, I'll send an email reminder, but it should be a really fun evening. And it's a wonderful cosponsorship, a collaboration that we've had for many years and hope will continue into the future. Let you look at that.
And the library cosponsored an event on campus with author Jane Smiley, which was very well attended and very well received.
And it was really fun. And the interviewer was, or conversation--
Moderator.
Moderator, was Steve Sullivan, who was there representing the Friends Foundation Board. And so that was very nice, too. We're slowly getting back into programming. We really aren't at all prepared at this point to go back into our regular schedule of programming because we have so many people coming into the building. So serving the people visiting is our top priority right now. But we are starting to do some of our cosponsorships. So page one should go from being a single page back to being four pages pretty soon. Any questions?
Thank you. We will move on to policy review. And this evening, we have the history policy. Let me get the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, Ames Public Library, adopts revisions to the history policy as presented slash amended. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Harry. Minor changes to bring us up to date post-construction projects to update the policy. Any questions or concerns about the way it is written? Okay. Hearing none, I will do a roll call for vote. Al?
Yes.
Sherri Bradley?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Shazia?
Yes.
Kevin? Yes. Motion passes. We will move on to the building project update, and the building project cost summary is on page 45 of your packet. I'm not seeing Brad here. I'm assuming Lynn's going to do this.
Brad is on vacation, a very well-deserved vacation.
Speaking of Brad, we, the three of us, had an email conversation within the last month about his fees, and he had identified how many hours he had left. Are we fine with that?
I think we'll probably need him a little bit longer.
Okay.
Some of the punch list items are taking a little bit more time and requiring some expertise that I would appreciate Brad's input on.
So I would just like a consensus from this group if we need to have the hours brought to the next meeting for approval, if there's just a general consensus that Lynn can manage Brad's additional hours. Thoughts?
Do you want a motion or a consensus?
There's not a motion in the packet, so I don't want to do a motion, but I just kind of want a consensus of what the comfort level is for moving forward with Brad and his contract.
I'm very comfortable having Lynn.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
I would support that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. And I'm sure that it will fall in the realm of my authority cost-wise, so.
And he goes above and beyond.
Oh, he's just--
Has managed his contract very efficiently.
We are so fortunate to have him.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Excuse me. Speaking of punch lists, so how extensive was it?
The punch list? There were several punch lists.
Several punch lists.
Yes. So there's like a--
Quite extensive.
Just to, you know, gotta get them from every angle. No, there's an exterior punch list, there's an interior punch list. There's a landscaping punch list, there's an MEP, Mechanical Electrical Plumbing punch list. There's a furniture punch list. So there are several. We are working on all of them simultaneously. The interior punch list was 76 pages long. And an item might be something--
Foot?
Really major.
What size foot?
Really small. I have kind of reversed eyes. I have to take my glasses off to read it. Yes, so it's small. It's about like this. And so we still have one person from Samuel's Group who's on-site regularly. They have shifted part of the week, Wednesdays and Thursdays, they're working overnight, all night, so that they can get the things done that make noise. We're coordinating to say, okay, you can work here today, you can work there tomorrow, you can do that overnight. So there's still a lot of little things to do and some major things to do. We are continuing to have weekly progress meetings. And so some things you'll see starting to fall into place over the next two weeks should be very busy. The exterior panels that were being replaced, the metal ones, are now in place. They haven't done the roof tie-in yet, so it doesn't look complete, but it's very close. The concrete slabs are set to be all done by next Wednesday. We did have an area where there was a membrane that was torn during installation, so we had some leaking into the building. That has been located and fixed, and then the concrete will go back on over it.
Now, is that different leaking than what we spoke about at the meeting, our last meeting, kind of a--
In August.
Emergency meeting or whatever? Because Brad had mentioned something about the book drop, having some moisture in it.
Yes, that was different. Yes. This was into the youth services workroom.
And plus, and then separately is tearing up the corner.
Yes.
Only on the front.
And that's, we are coordinating with the city on that. So that work should be, they're lining it up right now. We did decide to go with time and materials on that. And we have a change order that's ready to be processed right now, and another one in the works. So still some substantial work left to be done. And we are, you look at the cost summary, we still do have some money left in the change order allowance that should easily cover this. And, but we're pretty close, 98.4% complete. We're really--
But we're not paying that until we're satisfied that it's done.
Right, right.
So at this point, is there anything that is of big macro concern that would create some type of a, you know--
Crisis? Little major cause?
Well--
Yeah, unforceable thing that you think of that.
I don't think so. We are, it's really down to, having lived in the building for a month, we're starting to see like, oh, it would have been really nice had we done this. And we can still slide a few of those things in, but I don't see a lot of that happening. Some things we'll probably do outside of this contract, just minor things. Like it would be nice to have a shelf in this closet, those sorts of things.
That can be managed.
It can be managed very easily. The furniture punch list is probably the area where I'm spending my most time and angst. And it is all related to our custom millwork package. We are currently not satisfied with quite a bit of what's on-site, and there is a lot that is not yet on-site. So we are working through that. They issued a proposal for achieving satisfaction yesterday, and Kate and I are going through that with a fine-tooth comb. We will not let up until we are 100% satisfied. It may mean going with a different vendor for some things at this point. But by and large, we're getting there. We're very, very close. We are able to function very well. I think that the public is not being affected by these things that are going on in the background. So a couple of things that you, though I think you'll want to know when they're happening. The parking lot to the south is to be turned back over to the city next Wednesday. The Samuel's is almost completely out, and then the City Public Works Department has some work to do there, and then they'll turn it back over to the public.
So that might relate to my parking meter fees? Does that involve parking meters that are still being used?
It does.
Okay.
It does, so--
So we don't have a final number, do we, Karen?
We don't have a final number. But we're getting there. Um, landscape, plants and pavers. The pavers are in, which I'm really happy to, to report. They actually shipped today. And, um, this has been something that has been a, a problem for months. And I, if you recall, the original pavers that were spec'd, the company forgot to place the order, so they actually scheduled the guys to come and put them in and then realized no one had ordered the pavers. So by the time they ordered them, they were out of stock. We, or discontinued, I mean. So then we chose new ones. They were out of stock and they weren't planning to make anymore because it was so late in the season. And, um, so they did actually produce what we need and they have shipped. So then the, the landscapers will come in and finish that up. Um, they, they're very well aware that there has been some slippage of what is present since they laid that. So they will be correcting all of that. Uh, they have replaced the trees out front that were incorrect. Um, and they've replaced the plants that were incorrect. So I think we're very close on that one. We're finishing up the lead application. We've only got a, a few items left to, um, to finish off. And so that'll be very exciting when we get that information back. Um, I think that's, those are the main things. Do you have any other questions?
Thanks, Laura.
Okay. Sherri, any questions on that?
No, I just like to applaud the diligence, uh, looking for those pavers.
It's, yeah, it's been, it's been an interesting process.
Yeah.
Um, I will say too that we are still working on the technology there. I mean, as you see, there is not technology in the meeting rooms and the study rooms. There are a few other things that, uh, we're working on internally that we're making progress on, but it's a little slower than we would have hoped. Um, but they're coming. So we, we don't have a final total, anywhere near a final total yet for the project cost summary on where we are with technology expenditures. Um, Karen's been keep, doing a good job of keeping track of what we have spent so far. And at this point, it is at about three hundred seventy thousand out of the five hundred that we have a placeholder for. And we should be able to still stay within that five hundred thousand. Unless some really great thing comes on the market.
Speaking of really great things, we have our City of Ames friends here tonight.
Yes.
As some of this, the equipment that we purchased?
All of it.
All of it.
This is our fly pack. This is Derek and the fly pack.
Derek and the fly pack, I like that.
We, we thought we'd go on the road with that as like kind of a rock band sort of thing.
Perfect, great. Okay, we will move on to new business, which is the Story County funding. We have a current motion that I will read. Harry has made a request that, that we may amend this, but I want to learn more from staff about some of these calculations. So be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, Ames Public Library supports the funding proposal that provides each library with base funding in the amount of ten percent and additional funding based on circulation. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks. Al, second?
Second.
Shazia moved, Al second. Okay. Uh, that wording, we just wanna, we might wanna work with, cause it's, it's not as clear as we think it should be. Um, Lynn attended a meeting. We're changing the way we're funded. We're gonna lose money. Nevada's gonna lose a little money. Everybody else is gonna get more money. Walk us through these calculations on page fifty-four.
Well, I have to find page fifty-four. Oh, thank you. Okay. This was provided by the Story County Library Association, so I did not verify the numbers. But, um, this is what, what we are slated to get, um, and what the effect of skimming off a ten percent base would have on our allocation. So for many, many years, I, I don't really remember when we didn't do it this way. We have, as the Story County Library Association, we have approached the supervisors together as a unit and suggested to them that the, the best way to allocate the money that they have set aside for library funding, that we would divide it up based on actual service to rural residents in the unincorporated areas. Um, we've had quite a few discussions about the meaning, meaningfulness of circulation as a measure of effectiveness and success of a library. And we have come to the conclusion that it really isn't the best measure, but it's, it's what we have available. It's, it's the one measure that we all have. But it doesn't reflect, um, the library as a community gathering place. It doesn't reflect the number of people who come in and check their email or work on a job application. And so it is the opinion of, of the group that it would be fairer to do some sort of base allocation and then use, the balance would be then distributed based on use. And we would continue to use circulation figures as a model for use. We did look at what other counties throughout the state are doing and it's not at all uncommon to have the base model. Um, some of them just divide equally among the libraries. So there wasn't a consistent way of doing it. Um, but the base model seems to be one that people are quite happy with.
Do we know what our peers in Cedar Rapids and Iowa City, Johnson County?
I have that.
And the circulation, you're just looking at the annual circulation. It's not an average. So there's no historical trend that takes into account. So, so for whatever reason, a particular year, circulation was done due to renovate, renovation, whatever the circumstances might be. You're just looking at any given year.
We're looking at, at each year on its own and we're looking at only that portion of the, of circulation that is to rural residents. And so the end result of this may not be as big a hit as it feels like we're going to have because both Nevada and Ames have new libraries. And we'll see an increase in circulation among all users. So it's very possible that our circulation will, will be enough higher that it would kind of make up the difference.
In future years, not, not this year.
Outer, outer years, yeah.
Right. But, um, if we didn't do it this way, then Nevada and Ames would just kind of gobble up all the money. Um, it really makes a huge difference to a small town library. A thousand dollars makes a huge difference to them. Um, and as we talked about, um, at that, the meeting that I attended, you know, they have to, um, turn on the lights and, and put toilet paper in the restrooms no matter what their circulation is. So it does seem like a, a more equitable approach to, to do it this way. We, we don't wanna be the nine hundred pound gorilla.
No.
That, um, I, I really would like to continue to see the Story County Library Association as a very collaborative, um, helpful organization where we are, um, peers rather than the big town. And I think there's a potential in the future for us to do much, much more resource sharing. We really haven't done that in the past. So I would recommend moving forward with the, the ten percent base as a, a model.
So right now, it would be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
So the ten percent base would be
But it would go down to a hundred and eighteen, two sixty-four.
Right.
Ten percent of what? That's, that's where I'm confused.
Oh, I think
So it's, if it's ninety percent of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, that's not a hundred and eighteen.
Circulation numbers are not there.
Could I suggest an alternate motion?
Yeah.
That provides each library will receive an equal share of ten percent of the annual county funding. Ninety percent of the annual funding will be distributed to each library based on circulation.
I think that is the intent.
Well, I do too.
No, I, I totally
Less ambiguous.
Oh, no, but I mean, that's, that's a good way of saying it. I think that does capture the intent. So each library receives
Here, this is saying equal share in that ten percent.
I think the base number is, they don't have the base number.
And I calculated those out today.
Whatever the basis, I think that has gone down. Because this hundred and twenty-eight?
Hundred and twenty-eight is if we just did it the way we were doing it in any other year, correct?
Right.
Okay. But we're, we're going down ten thousand, two hundred and some dollars.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we get that? How does that number get derived?
Wait, what is the math of how do you come to a hundred and twenty-eight, five thirty? So ten percent of I think if you know what the base number is, then we will know.
Right, I, I believe that it's the two hundred eighty-five, six is the appropriation.
Okay.
Okay.
So then if you take ten, ten percent of that, I'll try to get to my
So twenty, twenty?
That's twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, twenty-six, something like that.
The one twenty-eight is forty-five percent of the two eighty-five, six.
So in that, how many, eleven places?
So that's two, five, nine, six per library. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's about right.
Two, two thousand, five ninety-six each.
But it should be two point eight five per
Right, two point eight five.
It should be two point eight five.
And that's still
Well, there are eleven libraries. Dividing, dividing into twenty-eight thousand, five hundred
And you
Sixty.
But that's still
The math doesn't
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm not a math person, that's why I'm looking at you.
Right. Doesn't work.
I like the concept, but I wanna know what we would, what we're getting this, what would be nice is what we're getting this year, what we would have gotten next year and what we're anticipating actually getting if we make this change. And then this ten percent base, is it unknown how much of it we're gonna get reallocated?
That's what it seems like.
Well, it would just be ten percent of what the county has next year.
Right, but it, you're right, it doesn't
But it's all, but it's allocated all the
But how will you know what number you're mailing soon to?
Exactly, yeah. How, how are you gonna put this in your budget?
And, and as you contemplate that, can we step back to one of your concerns at the very beginning? That's seven thousand dollars when we look at page
Yes.
Eighteen.
Yes.
And if you look at the difference between what was actually allocated from the county for twenty thirteen versus twenty twelve, it looks almost like a, like an eight thousand dollar reduction.
From the one twenty-six, five eighty-eight down to one eighteen, nine sixteen.
Right. And were we still talking about the same number of dollars, two eighty-five, six hundred overall?
Has the county reduced their library allocation? Do we know?
I think I figured out the math.
Okay. Because we, you can see the one eighteen.
Okay, so what, what, what she's done is she's taken the twenty, two hundred eighty-five, six hundred thousand and from that subtracted twenty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty.
It's a ten percent
Right, so of that, we get two thousand five hundred ninety-six. Then that leaves a balance of two hundred fifty-seven thousand, oh four oh.
Okay.
And then we get forty-five percent of that based on our circulation. So that's a hundred fifteen, six, six, eight, plus the base, the two five nine six is a hundred eighteen, two six four.
Okay.
Okay. So this fiscal year that just ended, we received a hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Next year we'll receive a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-four. So we're only losing six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Really?
Right.
Well, that was last year compared to this year.
This year, right.
But we budgeted for this. Um, and we've actually already received a check, my, for the hundred twenty-eight, right?
But what Al was finding out, we had a significant decrease last year. We're just gonna have a small decrease of six hundred and seven dollars.
Correct, so we already took the hit last year.
So we're taking the hit. Now, go ahead.
Well, and then do think that we will be getting, we will be having a
The grow over of the circulation.
Right, hopefully, but that's an unknown.
Right, it's unknown.
Now, now that's the piece I wanted to get back to.
Yeah.
Now, are, were you comfortable in pleading maybe us maybe taking a smaller bite out of the county's share to spread it amongst the library and spread goodwill?
I hadn't suggested.
So you're thinking we could be more magnaminous and try to find our own way to raise more money?
Or maybe give back our, our base, our, our ten percent, part of the base. You know, that's what I was, I thought I was, I was hearing.
Oh.
That, that idea of, you know, kum by y'all amongst the library.
I think, I think a big, um, a big hug would be
Yeah, yeah.
To accept this.
We could be the big bullies on the block and say, no, we're not gonna buy into this. I think being magnaminous and saying, yes, we're going to go along with this is, is the intent.
Right, and then
We, we don't know what the budget is to keep this, the lights on in this building for the next year.
So I, and, and then this, this will be, if you agree, will be proposed to the Board of Supervisors. They could say, no, we wanna keep doing it the way we've done it. Or they could say, we want to throw a dart at a dartboard and decide. Um, they can do whatever, whatever they choose. They love that we approach them together. They, they love that we are working well together. That has not always been the case and it certainly is not the case in other counties.
Will this get approved by the supervisors before or after their election?
It will be after the election.
Okay, can we go, any more questions, discussions?
Okay, okay.
Before we go back to rewording the motion?
I feel more comfortable that that explains what we're doing than the ten percent here. But
So do you still wanna change the wording of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, did, Karen, did you get that?
That it provides each library That each library will receive an equal share of ten percent of the county's annual library funding and ninety percent of the funding will be shared based on circulation to rural residents.
That's the way they've got it picked.
Okay, do we accept that as a friendly amendment or do we need to decline the motion standing on the floor?
If you accepted them.
I'm accepting.
One question.
Yes.
Do all libraries consider usage of the idea of circulation? So could it be attending an event or, or is everyone on the same page?
Everyone's on the same page at this moment in time. I think that this conversation will continue. This is really, um, kind of opened, opened people's minds to what, um, what could be. And the whole library world is dealing with this right now. That, um, the traditional measures of success are, are pretty antiquated and not reflecting the reality of, of the value of a library in the community today. So as more measures are identified, we will continue the conversation. But this would, this is a good start.
Okay.
And with the decline of rural America, some of these are just gonna struggle to stay open over the coming years. I have a friend that works in the Collins Library, volunteers, and it's, it's sad.
It's very sad, you know, and, and they are every bit as much the community center as we are.
Yeah.
Uh, and they are, you know, the like, the directors have another part-time job at Casey's. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, they're, they're really struggling and doing a tremendous job. They fill out the same state report that we do. They order books, you know, is, actually, it's, it's harder for them. Um, and they're doing it all them, all themselves. And so I think if we can work together, um, we'll, we'll all have stronger libraries in our communities.
Yeah. Al, are you okay with the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So Karen read the motion. We'll take a roll call. Al?
Yes.
Sherri Bradley?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Shazia?
Aye.
Kevin, yes. Motion passes.
Right.
We are up to trustee comments. Al, do you have anything?
I have one question.
Okay.
Circulation was not part of this report. Circulation?
Of, of our report?
I'm curious, curious as to how these
How the first month of reopening has looked?
Yeah, circulation.
Let me look. I have a little email from Tracy. I know, I did too.
Karen?
But it's here. It's here. No, it's really, it's my fault. Um, we had circulation figures, I believe I shared for the first few days last time. Um, but let me find my email from Tracy that I asked her for, for this meeting. It's pretty busy. The nice thing that we're finding is that, um, I, I'm doing a walk-through a couple times a day at least through the upstairs and counting people and seeing what activities they're involved in. And there can be a hundred people up here. You don't hear them. Um, they're all involved in noble pursuits. Some of them are in small groups, some are, are by themselves, and it's just, it's a joy to behold. Um, they're really doing a great job of, of staffing and the children's area is noisy and fun like it should be. And up here is quiet as it should be. Um, okay, so here are some figures. This is the first month from the fourteenth through October thirteenth. We issued seven hundred fourteen new library cards. The number of users who have accessed their account, checked something out, um, or used a resource in e-resource or database is four thousand five hundred eight. The number of holds processed in September is eight thousand nine hundred fifty.
But the whole area was packed with carts full of holds when we opened.
The number of holds processed so far in October is five thousand seven hundred six. That's, that's high. I wish I had comparative figures. The, um, number of items circulated between September fourteenth and October thirteenth is one hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred thirteen.
Wow.
Wow.
A lot of, a lot of it is being done with our self-checks. And I am so happy to report after, after all of my, um, when Jean threw the, the last couple of years, I'm so happy to report that the biblioteca kiosks are just working beautifully. And if there is a little hiccup, they are very responsive. Um, they're easy for people to use, um, they're attractive. I mean, they're just working very, very well. And I, I don't have the figures completely yet, but we're getting, um, from our little snapshots, we're getting a much higher percentage use than we even were hoping to achieve. So we'll, we hope that that continues. Um, people are doing a good job with the self-service area and it's nice having staff nearby. Um, but people are really serving themselves as much as they can. Our automated materials handling system is working very, very well. It worked absolutely around the clock at the beginning. It does function twenty-four hours a day, um, and doesn't require much babysitting. So we're really pleased with that. Our efforts to, um, have technology do what it can do and free up staff to serve the public directly, they're really paying off.
Go ahead.
And I know that it's trustee comments, but I just thought of something important that I forgot to share with you. Uh, we, I went to city council Tuesday night with the last little piece of our reorganization. As you recall, Ann Dobbs retired in July. And so we, we did the same analysis with that opening as we have, have done in the past. And we were able to have the same deal with the city that we would not affect our budget bottom line, but we would look at, at adding positions. And so we were able to take Ann's position, which was librarian in adult services, and we moved it to librarian in youth services. And we were able to also get approved two halftime library assistants in adult services. So adult services doesn't lose any hours. They gain staff where they need it to help with programming and, um, direct customer service. Youth gains a, a full-time person that will be able to work with building security, policy development, planning, collection development, some of the higher level tasks. It also gives us an equal number of librarians on each floor, uh, which is a, a key to our security plans. And, um, we're very excited. So we will, we're working with human resources right now to get those So we will, we're working with human resources right now to get those positions advertised.
Good. Any other comments?
Come in. So I, I came to the library about two weeks ago on Saturday and brought my three-year-old grandson, uh, with me. And the first thing he noticed when he came through the doors, the stairway. So we went up and down fifteen times. I had to put him on my shoulder to get him out of there. He, he wants to go to the library now.
That's wonderful.
Great job, great job. It's good, be back.
Good, thanks. Sherry, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, but, uh, I would just like to report that the Citizens Feedback that I've been getting from friends and acquaintances is that people of Ames are very pleased with the library renewal. They can't say enough good things about it.
That's great to hear, thanks.
And, uh, also I, I just want to, because I don't know that we've done this in the past as much as I hope we will, is to just, uh, thank Brad Hamster for the wonderful job that he's done. Just express our appreciation to him. He's really been an invaluable person on this project.
He absolutely has.
I agree.
I agree.
Any comments, Harry?
I was here for the grand opening celebration sponsored by the Friends Foundation. I was really pleased that night. It was enjoyable and well done. And everyone I talked to was happy to be back here in these facilities. It's really nice.
No, wait, well, a job well done.
Yep.
It's wonderful, thank you.
Staff's worked very hard. Our next meeting is on Thursday, November the twentieth. And with that, we'll call the meeting to a close.